I want to call the city council meeting of July the 7th, 2015 to order. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Marsh.
Here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Petty.
Here.
Kennett.
Here.
Latour.
President.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Would you join in? I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. The first order of business we have tonight is the Advertising and Promotion Commission's Appointment Report. Mark, I believe you have that?
Yes. The nominating committee would like to recommend Robert Rhodes for one unexpired term ending 3/31/17 to the Advertising and Promotion Commission.
I'm going to entertain a motion to do so.
I'm going to...
Second.
A motion is second to appoint Robert Rhodes. Any discussion on that? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
Okay. Next order of business tonight is the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the June 16th, 2015, city council meeting minutes. Number two, a resolution to award RFP 15-05 and authorize a contract with Challenger Teamware the purchase of youth soccer uniforms in the amount of $12.15 plus tax per uniform for the fall 2015 and spring 2016 seasons, with an option to renew for the fall 2016 and spring 2017 seasons. Number three, resolution to approve a budget adjustment recognizing hazmat services revenue received by the fire department from Washington County in the amount of $1,726 and increasing the retail expense budget. Number four, a resolution to approve Federal Police Department policies 22.2.8, military activations 22.3, secondary employment 41.1.1, patrol, and 61.4.3 towed vehicles. Number five, resolution to award bid number 15-35 to authorize contract TriStar Contractors LLC in the amount of $252,500 for construction services, the airport terminal apron rehabilitation project, to approve change order number one to the contract with TriStar Contractors LLC in the amount of $197,500 to increase certain quantities of concrete fair, to approve a 5% project contingency to accept a 90-10 grant from the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics in the amount of $470,700, and to approve budget adjustment. Number six, McClellan Consulting Engineers Agreement, a resolution to approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract McClellan Consulting Engineers, Incorporated, in the amount of $164,480.71 for additional engineering services associated with the rehabilitation of historic Maple Street and Lafayette Street bridges, and to approve budget adjustment. Number seven, a resolution to approve task order number three with the watershed conservation resource center for the design and construction of a stream restoration project on an unnamed tributary of Cato Springs branch near the southern boundary of the regional park and for a feasibility analysis of the removal of an existing dam on the west fork of the White River. And number eight, a resolution to authorize contract with College Marketplace Federal LLC in the amount of $186,202.50 for payment of the costs associated with the installation of a traffic signal at College Avenue and Sonic Drive, and to approve a budget adjustment. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
No move.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
Okay. Under unfinished business.
Mayor.
Yes.
Before we move on, I was just, I know we have staff here for the last item of new business, and I was just going to recommend that we move the last item of new business to the first item of new business so that staff could go home.
Well, we can do that.
I didn't know that was a good time to mention that or...
Usually staff goes ahead and stays, and we let the citizens speak first on their items, but this is your agenda, and you all can arrange the agenda as you see fit.
So entertain as a motion?
Some, yes, it is.
Have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. What discussion do we have on this? Any? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Latour.
No.
Okay. All right. I assume we're moving this to the front of the...
New business. We've still got you...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Sorry, sorry, sorry. All right. Let's go back to unfinished business. Number one, an order to rezone that property described in zoning petition RZN 15-5044 for approximately 60.02 acres located at 4065 East Huntsville Road from RPZD 08-3071, residential plan zoning district, Bridgedale Plaza to RSF 7, residential single-family, seven units per acre, NS Neighborhood Services and CS Community Services. I'll entertain a motion to go to the third and final reading.
No move.
A motion is second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Get to that sheet.
Sorry.
Sorry, am I blocking you?
No. Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5044, approximately 16 acres located at 4065 East Huntsville Road from RPZD 8-3071, residential plan zoning district Bridgedale Plaza to residential single-family, seven units per acre, Neighborhood Services and Community Services.
Okay. Andrew, what we got?
I have no additional information on this. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
What questions do we have in the council on this? Everybody good? All right. Public comment on this? Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
I am Glenda Patterson. I live at 1106 St. Andrews Circle. It is a part of the Stonebridge Meadows subdivision, the community. There's been much discussion on this topic, this project, this time and in the past, and I'd like to point out the salient points. There is, even though our numbers are fewer this time, there is still strong opposition to rezoning the area, as there was when this came up several years ago. The salient points are, there is poor egress from the Stonebridge community, even in normal weather, when in clement weather the hits, it's even worse. This project would add additional congestion to an area that is already contested. The egress from the subdivision onto Highway 16 can be very problematic, and if you look at where the River Meadows entrance is, it's right next to the Highway 16 bridge that crosses the west fork of the White River. So you're adding, at the current density, which is also too great, another 80 to 160 vehicles that will try to cross two lanes of traffic to turn west on Highway 16 and have to contend with traffic moving eastward coming across the bridge. And the traffic speed at that time is usually about 45 to 50 miles an hour, so it will not be easy, and it'll only make things worse. Additionally, we have had bad weather recently, and the Dead Horse Mountain Road has also been hard to pass, and the bridge on that side has been closed due to flooding. So overall, the area is not good. The Community Services and the Personal Services that are supposed to be added to this project are really not necessary. Between one and five miles from the Stonebridge community, all the services that could possibly be added at that spot are already in place. I ask you not to discount the lone voice in the wilderness, and I ask that you not rezone this area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Any other public comment on this issue?
Clint McDonald, 1385 South Roberts Road, the developer. I just wanted to point out a couple of things of concern that I've heard from people about the ingress egress, and during this development, we would provide ingress egress on the north side onto Highway 16, and then on the south side of this development, there's already a stubout pinnacle drive that will provide ingress egress on the south side, and also we're providing ingress egress on the west side onto River Meadows. And then also during the development, we will provide a stubout into undeveloped land to the east for future development so we can connect to Roberts Road. So three new existing ingressy grass and one future, and the residents of this development have no need to use River Meadows when the houses are right there off the highway and will have their own entrance to the subdivision. So, and then also, I know it's a zone RSF 7, but we plan to have no more than 57 lots in there, which puts that down to 4.7 lots per acre, which is basically almost what the adjacent subdivision has, so that's all it has.
Any questions for the developer on this?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address us on this? Okay. We'll bring it back to the council. We're on the third and final reading. Is there any final comments from the council? Yes, John?
I'd just like to point out, one of the comments made in this discussion was, "We don't need additional services because these services are available within a short distance down the road." In my way of thinking, there's no person on the face of the planet that can determine when a business is needed and when a business is not needed. That is strictly a marketplace function. Perhaps businesses that go in here and services that go in here will duplicate other services, but perhaps they do it better and cheaper. It would be a deprivation of service to the public to say a business is not needed. Let the best man or woman win that competition. Competition is what protects we consumers all across this country. I cannot go along with the fact that someone would state additional services are not needed. We need all of our services. We need stiff and robust competition to ensure that we consumers are getting the best quality service or product at the lowest possible price. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Yes, Sarah?
I've really struggled with this one, because on one hand, I take the recommendations of staff and the planning commission very seriously, and I do feel that this use is, or the proposed zoning is compatible with adjacent land uses. However, I'm really, you know, we saw in the last rezoning request in this neighborhood, a lot of pictures of flooding, some pretty intense flooding, and so I'm very concerned about the stormwater, especially with it that close to the White River. You know, when we start talking about that degree of density and impervious surface area that close to the river, it's very concerning. So I guess I would like to hear from some of the other council members what you're thinking, because I'm really torn on this one.
Okay. What are the final comments we have? Yeah, hey.
I've also struggled with this one quite a bit, and ultimately, I think I'm going to vote against it, and not because it's a bad proposal as a whole. So let me try and explain my nuance a little. Number one, I think that we've got a huge gap in the zoning designations that we offer between Neighborhood Services and Community Services. And I don't think Community Services is appropriate for an edge development like this. I think something that's a little bit more modern in scale would be appropriate, but Community Services isn't it. Not because of the uses Community Services allows, but because of the scale it allows. That's my first concern. But really, my main concern is, everybody out there knows that traffic on this stretch of road is a nightmare, and it's become a nightmare because of developments like those that are already out there and like is proposed and like is happening further down the road. And I agree with staff's determination that this development would not have an appreciable impact if it were rezoned on that traffic nightmare, but on the other hand, I think if you're going to try and fix a solution or fix a problem, the first step in a solution is to stop doing what you've been doing that created the problem, and that's development on the edge at low density. It forces everybody onto one street to get in and out of town for essential services. So until we're ready to start treating this road as if it was an urban street in the middle of neighborhoods and not a highway that everybody needs to use to get in and out of the city, I don't see that problem getting any better, and I'm not willing to make it worse by encouraging more development on it.
Any other comment? Yes?
I certainly concur with what Alderman Petty said, and that's what I've been looking at as I've reviewed how I would consider this proposal as we move forward. Again, it's not a compatibility issue at this point, but we do have a nightmare, and there's a safety issue already out there, and until there is appropriate accommodation of the traffic and the management of traffic in this area, I think that safety is a real concern, and a concern that's been expressed overtly and often by the individuals that live in this area. I think the individuals are looking forward to development, but they understand better than anyone else as they come and go during the high-traffic times of the day, the continued problems that we have, and we have not stepped forward to handle this traffic issue in advance of this zoning change. Also, I worry about the, as Sarah mentioned, I worry about the management of the stormwater runoff. We mentioned this before in another zoning discussion that we had with the current amount of water that's been rushing into the west fork of the White River at that area. It's more evident than ever that we have conditions that could impair the waterway that is already on the edge of an impairment, and we need to be sure that we have the stormbank preservation in order before we offer more drainage into this area. Sediment is a real big issue in this area, and washing and sedimentation and impervious services is going, impervious surfaces is going to add to the concern that I have as we try to manage the water in the west fork of the White River. So due to the safety concerns and due to the stormwater management, at this point, I cannot support this as it's written, but I think that there is certainly the opportunity as we move into the future to look at the way that we handle the management of the traffic, the management of the stormwater, and looking at a correct zoning to manage these issues in order to allow the development of this property in a way that's appropriate for the expanse. I also understand the need for a free market, but the free market also has to be considerate of the long-term cost, and I see the long-term cost of safety and stormwater management as applicable to this zoning, so I will not be supporting it.
Okay. Ms. Stella?
Yes, Mayor. I agree with what I've been hearing. I've struggled with this as well, and I agree with Mr. Latour. We need to allow folks to build and develop, but I, especially during this last campaign, I was out there watching that traffic, and it is unbelievable, and I just don't feel like I can allow more development until we have made sure we have that traffic somewhat under control, and when we get the construction finished and all, I think it will be helpful. But at this point in time, that traffic on that particular area is just more than we ought to ask our citizens to bear.
Okay. Ms. John?
I'd like to respond to some of the concerns. If you think traffic is bad on Highway 16, try going down Weddington Road during the high-traffic times of the day. That argument can be used to shut down construction all over our city. Of course, traffic is bad at the high-drive times of the day. That's why I try to arrive at my office before the 8:00 drive, and I try to go home after the 6:00 drive. People can plan around traffic. I'm not saying that traffic is a problem we should ignore, but if there's a traffic problem, I don't view that as a private problem caused by development. I view that as a failure of government not keeping the infrastructure up with the development. So we have to see things from that perspective, too, and I realize it's not the city's responsibility to expand from two lanes to four lanes or six lanes. That's more of a state function. But to shut down construction because traffic is bad, I question that, and I would ask my fellow county aldermen and women to consider that. Number two, safety. We're always concerned about safety. Anytime there are more people, safety will probably be deleteriously affected. But our city is growing for good cause. This is a good place to live. We like what's here. Drainage. Drainage is simply an engineering equation. Our engineers, our city engineers, private engineers should be able to fix drainage problems. We have drainage problems there now. We have drainage problems in my ward out in West Fayetteville, but those things can be fixed, and that's not an insurmountable problem. Impervious surfaces, I realize that could cause deleterious drainage into the White River. We can put in retention ponds. People do that all the time to stop that runoff and let the water soak into the ground. There are ways to address these problems, and we can ask the developer to come up with a plan to address each one of these concerns, and he should, he or she should be able to do that. So I wouldn't see any real reason to stop the development.
Alan?
I, too, have been torn on this rezoning. I respect a lot of the opinions that came from the planning commission and also staff's recommendation of approval. What I'm looking at, though, is the part that I don't see as something that's prudent for this area is the RSF 7 and the Neighborhood Services. The Community Services aspect of this, though, I could see that as adding a viable resource to the community in that area so that they could have an actual walkable neighborhood. So I would like to see us remove the Community Services from the two other segments of the rezoning request and approve the Community Services and not the Neighborhood Services and RSF 7.
Okay. Let me get this. So you're going to make a motion to approve Community Services and do away with Neighborhood Services? Is that correct?
And take off the RSF 7. That would be my motion.
Okay. Is there a second on that? Just for like a sec. Okay. All right. Okay. What other comments do we have? All right, Sarah?
I guess I would like to say that I am, I like where you're headed with that, Alan, and I am open to seeing some other development scenarios. I don't think that this is the right one for this parcel at this time, so, you know, I don't, even though I think I, well, I'm definitely going to vote against it at this point, I do hope that we see an alternate, less-dense proposal come forward.
Okay. Adela?
That's exactly what I was going to say. Just because this doesn't get passed doesn't mean that we don't want any development to happen there, because we know that some development will happen, so we hope that there will be other scenarios brought forward. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Matthew?
I'll also underscore that, and I also want to say, you know, with enough money and enough time, you engineer your way out of any problem, but it's a lot cheaper if you see it coming to avoid it in the first place.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you might ask the developer if he would like to, instead of having a final decision tonight, have the city council table this so he might be able to get with planning and come back with something that might be more acceptable. It'd be up to him. Of course, he can ask for an up or down vote. He certainly can be entitled to that, but maybe he would like to take this opportunity to see if he can work out something a little bit more with planning.
Yes. Would like to do that.
I'm going to table it for the next meeting.
Second? I'm going to move to the second table for two weeks. Correct? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
Okay. Number two. Thank you all. Number two, a resolution to award a contract amount of X to Contractor, Incorporated, for the construction of the Maple Street and Lafayette Bridge rehab. Approve a project contingency of X, or 5% thereof, and approve a budget adjustment. Where are we with this?
I think Chris Brown has this.
Yes. Chris, would you like to come up?
I seen there in the audience reluctantly coming forward.
Yes. Come up. Happy Chris.
Happy Chris.
As you all know, we received bids for this project, and we did not receive a bid that we could award. It was higher than the amount certified by quite a bit. So we've been meeting with the consultant this week, working on a game plan to look at revising the scope, contacting some additional contractors, and doing some other things to get this out for bid and hopefully come back to you with a bid that you can award to a contractor so we can move forward with the project, but I think we're requesting that this be tabled indefinitely, and we'll come back when we have bids ready.
No move. Second.
I have a motion to second table indefinitely. Any discussion on that? All right. We'll rebid, retool, and try and figure something out. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
Okay. Move along to new business. Residents authorized...
Well, actually...
Sorry, 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 sorry. You're right, you're right, you're right. Forgot, forgot, forgot. Yep. It's a little slider there for you all. All right. First order of business tonight on new business would be C5, just moved to number one, an order to amend chapter 92, animals of the Fed, of the Federal City Code to provide protection for the animals from being confined in enclosed vehicles in extreme temperatures and to prohibit deceptive acts and misrepresentations regarding the origin of animals turned into the Federal Animal Shelter and to make other technical revisions.
Whereas the city should protect animals confined in vehicles during periods of extreme temperatures, and whereas Fayetteville Animal Shelter staff have experienced a large number of people attempting to turn in animals to the shelter who are not Fayetteville residents or who found the animal outside of the Fayetteville city limits, which creates an undue burden on shelter resources and makes reunification much more difficult. And whereas additional revisions to this section to clarify procedures regarding microchipping, redemption of animals, spaying and neutering, and penalties for violation of this section will provide clarity to staff and Fayetteville residents and also improve the efficiency of the animal services program. Now therefore, it be ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enact Section 92.02G of the Fayetteville City Code as follows. Section 92.02G, no person shall, one, confine an animal in an unattended enclosed vehicle where the outside temperature is 70 degrees Fahrenheit or greater, and the interior of the vehicle is not provided with conditioned air or adequate ventilation to maintain an internal temperature of 100 degrees Fahrenheit or less. Two, confine an animal in an unattended vehicle where the outside temperature is 30 degrees Fahrenheit or less, and the interior of the vehicle is not provided with heated air to maintain an internal temperature of at least 30 degrees Fahrenheit. Section 2, that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enact Section 92.42 of the Fayetteville Code as follows. Section 92.42, deceptive acts and misrepresentations prohibited. A, no person shall obtain possession... A, no person shall obtain possession or custody of any domestic animal, four, or on behalf of the owner thereof for the purpose of avoiding payment of fees or penalties imposed upon the owner by this chapter. Subsection B, no person shall intentionally misrepresent his or her residency to the personnel of the Fayetteville Animal Shelter, and C, no person shall intentionally make any misrepresentation regarding the origin of an animal being presented to the Fayetteville Animal Shelter. And section three, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends Section ninety-two point two three B, Section ninety-two point two four A, Section ninety-two point two four D, and Section ninety-two point nine nine A, as shown on Exhibit A attached or to have made a part here of. This was brought forward by the Animal Services Division. I think Justine is here to explain it to us.
Yes, Justine.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, okay, so I'm just gonna walk you through kind of what we're thinking about here. Um, I do wanna say that since last agenda session, we were able to call a special meeting of the Animal Services Advisory Board. Last night, we read through all of these and they did unanimously endorse them as written. So the first section that we're proposing to amend, um, ninety-two point two three B, basically concerns the impounding of dogs or cats when they're found running at large. Um, a lot of this has to do with, um, replacing familiar language that was left over when we switched to mandatory microchipping a couple of years ago. There was some overlooked language regarding city licenses, which we don't have any longer, so that's a housekeeping issue. Um, the main substantive change would be to, um, reduce the holding period of animals that come in with a registered microchip from ten days to seven days. Um, the thought process behind that is we are open six days a week, our officers work seven days a week, um, we're very proactive in trying to reunite pets with owners that, especially if we have a starting place, if we have a microchip that's been registered, even if the initial contact information is no longer good. We have ways to look up and see if they still have water service for the city, if we can contact them, leave a door hanger at their existing address, um, also send a certified letter. So we continually make proactive efforts to reunite these animals with their homes. We just find that most animals, when they're reclaimed, and we do have a very high redemption rate, especially for dogs in our city, um, usually happens within the first seventy-two hours, five days, maybe. After about five days, the chances of that animal being reunited really drop. And mainly, we see it an issue when the owner maybe knows their animal is there and they're just not coming. So we're kind of stuck holding that animal in limbo for ten days before we can go ahead and move it up for adoption. So it's, um, just a way to kind of move those animals through our system a little bit faster. Still allowing seven full days for them to come and reclaim their animal. Um, one concern that was brought up is if the owner's out of town and they can't get back within the seven-day period, of course, if we have contact with an owner and we know that you're coming for your pet, we're not gonna adopt it out to somebody else. Um, I mean, we're not gonna hold it for months on end, but if we know you're coming, we're definitely gonna work with, work with you, um, to use our professional discretion to, to be able to do that. So, um, and then the second proposal, um, the second proposed amendment is also just changing another section of code to reflect that change from ten to seven days. The next one, um, involves striking a portion of language about issuing vouchers for spay-neuter services. We are lucky enough to have our own veterinarian on staff, so we do all our own surgeries in-house. Um, we haven't issued vouchers in probably ten years, so that's really not needed anymore. And then the other proposed amendment, um, is under the penalties for any citation that we would write. We'd have a minimum penalty of fifty. There is no minimum right now. We did run this, of course, through the city attorney and the prosecuting attorney's office, and they were on board with that. Um, and there is still a limit, an upper limit that was already established in the ordinance, so this is just adding a minimum of fifty dollars. And then our two new sections, um, the one that seems to be getting the most attention is, um, about confining your animal to a hot car. Um, the reason behind this was we had a case last year where, um, we were called out to a, a puppy that was left in a car in the sun. Um, we have a little gadget that can take the internal temperature of a car. The lowest place that we took, the lowest temperature that we got in that car was about a hundred and eight degrees, up to about a hundred and twelve. The people were actually inside eating a sandwich, um, in a, in a restaurant while their dog was in the car. So, um, and when we explained to them the situation and the gravity of it, they weren't really understanding. So that's why we wrote that citation. When it got to court, um, their attorney argued that because, under the specific ordinance that we cited them under, there wasn't any provision for this particular thing, that they hadn't done anything wrong and there was no lasting damage to the puppy, and the judge agreed with them. So that was, um, kind of a call for us to be like, well, maybe we need to address this specifically so that we have this. When it's warranted, we can write a ticket. Um, I think a lot of people have been a little bit confused because I think seventy degrees is kind of the temperature that they hear. Seventy degrees is not that hot. If it's, you're in the shade, the wind is blowing, it's not that bad. Um, so I think it's important to note that, you know, it has to be at least a hundred degrees or more in the internal temperature of your car for us to even be able to write a citation. Um, we are very much on educating and, and responding and helping our citizens. We want people to see our animal control officers, see our animal control trucks, and ask for help if they need it, feel comfortable approaching us. So we're never, you know, wanting to penalize somebody unless we really do feel like it's warranted. A lot of times when we respond to these situations, the people are very apologetic or, you know, say they didn't realize how long they've been gone, we're able to kind of talk to them about our concerns and maybe warn them if we feel like we need to and move on with our lives. So, um, the temperature guidelines that we reached were based on just research that, um, other places have done, a lot of other cities have enacted similar ordinances, and, um, of course, our shelter veterinarian kind of reviewed our guidelines. So that's that. And then lastly, um, the deceptive acts and misrepresentations prohibited. It's based on one that the City of, the City of Lowell did, um, last year. And, um, they had just had a lot of issues. They're kind of between Rogers and Springdale, a lot of people, and they have a very small facility, and they had a lot of people coming from all over trying to, um, bring animals to them and then fibbing about where they had come from. Um, we are so lucky to have such a supportive community and administration that everybody wants to bring us their animals, which is great, um, except that we can't accept every animal. We have a duty to the animals that we're funded by Fayetteville tax dollars to care for those animals first, and that's where our responsibility lies. Um, so it's not that we don't wanna help everybody, it's just that's not our scope and our mission. We're here for Fayetteville citizens. So when we have people bringing in animals from other cities, even other counties, um, I had a dog from P Ridge the other day that showed up, and I had turned it away, and we always point people in the direction of the correct place to go, um, but they called back later that evening when it was just one animal control officer and fibbed about where they'd found the dog. And so we ended up with the dog, which fortunately, we were able to find the owner thanks to social media. But things like that just really greatly reduce the chances of that animal ever being reunited with their actual home, which is what we always have hoped to have happen. So that, and then also the situation where, say, my dog has been picked up running loose three or four times, so my impound fee is quite high, so I decide instead to have my friend go and adopt my dog back for sixty dollars instead of paying my two hundred dollar fine, um, that's something we also wanted to avoid. So those are pretty much our changes in a nutshell, um, which, like I said, we did manage to get the advisory board together and go over them last night, and they did, um, support them as presented.
Okay. What questions do we have? Yes, John?
Straighten me out. I have a couple of concerns. Uh, how do you determine the resonance of a dog or a cat? Do they tell you?
Um, it depends. So basically, where this particular ordinance would talk about the residency of the person. So usually, um, we ask for a photo ID. Understand, a lot of times, maybe you've moved, maybe your address is still in Springdale, but you live in Fayetteville. We just ask that you bring a piece of mail that says, hey, I live here. That's if you're, um, turning over an animal that you own, um, so it's your pet. Um, now, if you have a stray, honestly, a lot of times, we just have to take you at your word. We don't have any special lie detector. I wish we did sometimes, but we don't. Um, these cases usually pop up because of social media, social media or Craigslist or something like that. Um, our staff is really proactive about getting on there, seeing if we can find these postings, um, for people that have either lost their pet or found a pet. A lot of times, people will just say, hey, I found this, this is exactly what happened with the P Ridge dog. Actually, they told me they found it in P Ridge, but they'd also posted on the local, uh, we have a local Lost and Found Pets of Northwest Arkansas page that it's a ton of traffic, and they had posted, you know, this dog was found in P Ridge, and, uh, so there it is. I mean, you know, so, does that help?
That helps. Okay. So we're, we're still dependent on the word of the person bringing the dog in?
Absolutely.
So if someone finds a stray dog in Fayetteville, you really don't know unless the dog has a microchip, where the dog, what city he's really from?
Right. Exactly. I mean, we just take people at their word, and, I mean, sometimes if we, if it looks a little shifty, we may ask some extra questions, but at the end of the day, I can't make you tell the truth. So you can do what you wanna do. It's part of it.
I have, I have another question. Uh, the seventy-degree number and the hundred-degree number. So I can't leave my dog in my vehicle, my animal, my cat, my hamster, whatever. How about my fish? Is that okay?
No, no.
The water would be cooler. Okay. Uh, I can't leave my animal in the car if the ambient temperature is seventy degrees or higher, but you won't write a citation unless the internal temperature is a hundred degrees or higher?
It's a...
Have I got that straight?
It has to be at least seventy degrees for us to respond. And then in order for us to write a citation, it would have to be a hundred degrees. So if we go out, if it's seventy-five degrees and your car is parked in the shade, your windows are rolled down, we take the internal temperature, it's maybe seventy-eight, that's not gonna warrant a citation.
So we only get a citation if our temperature inside the car is a hundred degrees or more?
Yes.
Okay. So that's really what we gotta look at?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, it's a two-part test. It could be more than a hundred in there with the way this is written. It has to be also at least seventy outside. So it could be sixty-nine outside, you park in the middle of a wide lot with no shade, and your sunroof is open, and it gets more than a hundred degrees in there, you can't write a citation until it hits seventy outside, the way this is written.
Okay. So that, that makes it more lenient for the pet owner?
Pet owner.
Okay. Uh, I still find it inconsistent, you're reducing the number of days I have to claim my pet from ten to seven, but you maintain that you really wanna get, reunite the pet with its original owner. When I go on vacation, I usually, I'm gone for more than seven days. So if my neighborhood friend who's watching my dogs lets them loose and I don't know about it, my dog's just gone when I get back, right?
I guess it depends on how long you've been gone.
Ten days.
Yeah. If you're gone ten days, then yes, that could feasibly happen. Um, I'll just be honest with you, we see about two thousand five hundred animals a year, and that just doesn't really happen, what we end up with repeatedly. And that's the only reason we would bring this forward. I would never bring it forward if I didn't think that it was something that was actually going to aid us in our services. Um, we just find that they sit there longer, it means we're paying to care for them longer, it means that those animals, sometimes they don't handle the shelter environment as well. Ten days is a long time to sit in a holding place. The animals that are kept in our, like, for dogs especially, um, they're kept in a separate back building, so they're really only getting interaction with about one person who feeds and takes care of them, but they're not getting really any outside time hardly, um, mainly because they're not our property yet, so we have to be extra careful with them, that we don't lose them again, um, 'cause that can happen if we take them out to our dog park area. Um, so we have to be really careful with those animals, and I think it is important to stress that we are very proactive in this. I mean, it's definitely something where we're calling every number you have listed, we're checking everything we can. Um, it's not, we don't just sit back and kind of wait for you to call us or wait till you show up and, and have that happen. Also, unless your pet is, like, highly desirable, I doubt that we would be able to adopt it out before you got back from vacation, unless you took a grand tour of Europe, in which case, be really mad at whoever you asked to watch your pets that they, uh, didn't look for your pet, so...
Well, I wanna go on record now. I think you made a statement, if we know you're coming, we'll hold your pet. I'm coming if you get my dogs.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Other question. Justine, it, by the way, thank you for getting an Animal Services Board meeting together to review this. I really appreciate that. Um, so when you're, when you're looking at that, in the situation John mentioned, if someone was out of the country and it was gonna be another ten days until they were able to get back, would the Pets in Crisis program kick in so that the shelter could hold on to that animal?
Absolutely. I think that's actually a really good scenario. I mean, theoretically, we would prefer that if you had the friend that could come and get them and take care of them and see you got back, or maybe if you wanted to board them in a private facility, 'cause, I mean, the shelter's not the best place to be housing your pet. Absolutely. I mean, that's what that program is for. For those that don't know, we do have a Pets in Crisis program. Um, it's kind of a stopgap for people that are having a major crisis. Usually, it's for domestic abuse, temporary homelessness, um, some other kind of emergency situation. Um, it's not just free boarding when you know on vacation, but in this particular instance, you know, if you simply had no other options, then yes, that would be a, a good example of that.
Any other questions? Okay. What public comment do we have on this?
Michael Collins, sixteen twenty-five North Giles Road. Um, I just wanna say, I adopted a dog from the Fayetteville Shelter, and they're great. I'm pro-dog, I love it. Um, but I do have a couple of concerns. Uh, one of them is if a, if a tenant owns, owes two hundred bucks on the pet and can send his neighbor to go get it for fifty and can't do that anymore, they might opt just to let it get euthanized. I don't know if that's the best option either. There might be some kind of an arbitration process for fines that bring it down to a more reasonable level, but just a thought. Um, the other question, Mr. Mayor, is it still legal to abort children in this city?
As far as I know, yeah.
It is. Okay. So, uh, the abortion is the termination of a living human, uh, that has not been born yet deemed a fetus, right?
You know, Mr. Collins, we're talking about Animal Services here, and you're getting off on abortion.
Well, I'm, I'm pro-person, I'm pro-dog. I'm just curious if we have laws to protect an animal, but we don't have laws to protect a human, where our priorities might be as a city?
Okay.
I mean, we're, we're destroying living humans, right? They're deemed fetuses. What if I, what if I perceive my pet to be livestock? Would it not then be a pet? I, would I be legally able to keep it in the car or what?
Mr. Collins, stay with the Animal Services ordinance.
Okay. Well, that's just my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Let's bring it back to the council. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I, I've been, um, looking at this quite extensively since we, um, talked about it at Agenda Session and worked with the city attorney to prepare some amendments. Um, one was going to be, uh, regarding the holding period, but I think since the Pets in Crisis program could kick in if someone were going on vacation, that I want to just not touch on that. The only thing that I would like to change, and I'll offer this as an amendment, the word destroy and destroyed is used in several sections of ninety-two point two three B and ninety-two point two four A. Um, that's very old wording from Animal Services perspective, and it should just be changed, in my opinion, to the word euthanized, which is what it actually is. So my motion would be to change those words and their appropriate tenses to the word So, my motion would be to change those words and their appropriate tenses to the word euthanized.
And this has been passed out to the city council through email with a new section four. So, your amendment is to add section four, and let me read that, even though I think you've already all received it. Section four would say that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, hereby amends the terms "destroy" or "destroyed" to "euthanize" or "euthanized" where they occur in section ninety-two oh-four B, ninety-two point two-three B, and ninety-two point two-four A. And I think they're also shown on the exhibit that was provided and highlighted there. But the other highlighted material which would have changed the holding time is not your motion at this point in time.
No, it is not.
Okay, so that, it would only be to change, in fact, those portions of Exhibit A that talk about euthanized now.
From the word "destroyed," euthanized, right?
That's correct.
That's pretty much it. Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay. What discussion we have on anything?
This is Ward Four Amendment.
Okay. What public discussion do we have on the amendment? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Any further discussion? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Latere?
Yes.
Okay. Now... Now that it has been amended, I still need to go to the second reading?
So, move.
Second.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Latere?
No.
In order to amend Chapter ninety-two, Animals of Fayetteville City Code, provide protection for animals from being confined in enclosed vehicles in extreme temperatures, to prohibit deceptive acts and misrepresentations regarding the origin of animals turned into the Fayetteville Animal Shelter, and to make other technical revisions.
If we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call?
Can we comment on this?
We have a, yes, I suppose you can.
Sure, okay. Are we going to pass it all tonight? Is there some hurry?
Not for me. I'm just saying, we have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading, which will have to either be voted on or withdrawn, if I understand the rules correctly.
Well, we have a motion and we have a second, so we should have some discussion on that motion, right?
Oh, certainly, John. Absolutely.
Good, good, good. I don't like for, we, I mean, the law provides that we have three readings.
Sure.
And normally, that's three separate city council meetings, so that's a six-week process.
Uh-huh.
It gives people time to learn about what we're doing, to express an opinion, et cetera. I don't see the need to pass it all in one sitting. So, I would urge my aldermen and women, fellow aldermen and women, to, let's take our time, and let's do it the right way. I understand if there was some emergency, if we had testimony that dogs are dying all over the place because of, they're in hot cars, or we might have some urgency to it. But I don't think we've had that testimony. So, I'd like to see us take our time and give people in our town time enough to digest what we're doing.
Okay. Well, would the council member like to withdraw the motion to take it to the third and final reading?
No.
No?
No. You know, we're expecting over a hundred-degree weather this next week, and I think we need all the tools we can to keep animals in our community safe.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
No.
Latere?
No.
Mayor, there are five votes for, two against. You may vote if you please.
I'll vote in favor of it.
In order to amend Chapter ninety-two, Animals of the Fayetteville City Code, provide protection for animals from being confined in enclosed vehicles in extreme temperatures, to prohibit deceptive acts and misrepresentations regarding the origin of animals turned into the Fayetteville Animal Shelter, and to make other technical revisions.
Okay. Any final comments? Yes, Sondra?
Well, I just appreciate all the work that Animal Services staff did on this ordinance. And I think it is urgent that we do pass this, because the, how many calls do we hear on this per year? I can't remember. It was in the...
We ran about fifty so far this year. That was us of last week, so temperatures rise and temperatures drop.
I'm guessing those were mostly in July and August. So, I think that it is more urgent and not something that should be waited on in this case. So, thank you all again for putting this together and working so hard on it.
Okay. All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Latere?
No.
Okay. All right. Moving along to new business further. I have, number one, a resolution to authorize a contract with Evans Construction and Remodeling LLC in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars for a community development block grant rehabilitation of an eligible residence located at thirty-two ninety-five West Old Farmington Road.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yolanda Fields, Community Resources Director. We're bringing forward this specific item that is under our CDVG Housing Program. Our CDVG Housing Program is available to individuals that live in the city limits of Fayetteville, that own their own home, that have lived in their home for at least a year. I also want to let you know that we make every effort possible to provide information about our program to the community. We have a quarterly newsletter that we put out. Right now, we have twenty-four hard copy sites, because a lot of the folks that we work with do not have access to computers. We also provide our newsletter to eight city facilities, because, of course, employees are also eligible for the program. We also have events during the year. As a matter of fact, July seventeenth, we will be having our CDVG in the Park, where we provide free lunch for folks to come out, talk to us about our program. We also invite nonprofits to provide information to the community. We also do our festival, which is the first Thursday in September. We put on, we're celebrating the different, the many different cultures of the Ozarks. And we provide an opportunity for folks to come out and perform. There's no charge. We also provide a venue for, again, nonprofits to provide information. We provide information about our program. The university is very involved. We find that this is a great opportunity for individuals coming to Fayetteville to begin to participate in the community. A lot of students feel like they're not, that they shouldn't be a part of events. Well, we want them to know that, yes, they need to be a part of our events. We also go to the university. We are there for the off-campus living fairs in the spring and the fall. We are there for Razor Bash. We are there, this year, we started going to orientation sessions. That is, an hour a day during the month of June. We provide information on all our programs. We provide information on the city of Fayetteville. We want students to know that when it's time for them to move off-campus, that they are welcome and that they have the tools to become an active and compliant member of the city. I am wondering if we have any questions, because I think there were specific questions about the program. Yes?
Yes, John.
Last Tuesday at Agenda Session, you did not present this issue. A young man presented this issue to us.
Yes.
So, I'm to take it that there, how many people work with you in this program?
In community development, I have three full-time and one part-time temporary.
Okay. So, one of the programs are these block grants where you choose an individual to...
Well, an individual applies.
Apply.
And if they are eligible, there is not a choosing. If they are eligible and they meet all the criteria, then we will work on their home. It's not a contest in any means.
Suppose there are ten people that are qualified and they all apply. How do you distinguish between the ten? Who gets the money?
They will all be served. The challenge that we have right now is finding contractors to do the work. It's not not having the money to do the work, it's finding contractors. So, individuals apply. We look to make sure that they qualify. We look at their home to determine if we can actually do the work within our program budget, and we do the work.
So, if ten people apply and ten people are qualified, you make sure those then...
We are going to get everybody there. Now, if we have to push them over to next year, because usually, weather, or if we don't get the bid, they will get the work done.
And where does the money come from to fund this activity?
This money comes from HUD.
HUD?
Yes.
That's Housing and Urban Development?
Yes, sir.
A U.S. agency?
Yes.
So, these are federal tax dollars?
Yes.
Okay. That's interesting.
Yes, and it's a program established to assist low- to moderate-income individuals. It is now in its almost forty-first year of existence.
Right.
And it helps a lot of people. And honestly, I will tell you that this program enables the affordable housing stock in the city of Fayetteville to be maintained. Because a lot of the individuals that we assist, if there wasn't somebody there to help them maintain their home, they wouldn't have a place to live. And guess what? They wouldn't be shopping. They wouldn't be buying gas. They wouldn't be providing that income to the city. So, it's a circle. It's a circle. And we're very proud to be a part of it.
I'm glad you're very proud to be a part of it. When you listed the qualifications, you said they have to own their own home.
Mm-hmm.
They had to do so for at least a year.
Mm-hmm.
And you didn't list an income qualification.
Oh, of course.
I presume there's some kind of income limit you can earn?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
For one individual, it's thirty-two nine. For this particular contract that we have here, we have a family of six, and they cannot exceed fifty-four five.
Okay.
And this family meets that criteria. And everything that we do on these projects, we meet all of our purchasing requirements. We have one individual, we kind of split up the duties. So, there's never, I don't want anybody to ever be put in a position where somebody is saying, "You chose," or "You showed favoritism." That is not what we are here to do. We are here to assist.
I'm very glad to hear that. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
Any other questions for Yolanda on this? Okay. All right. Do we have any public comment on this? See, now, I'll bring it back to the council.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any final comments from the council?
Mayor?
Yes, John.
I'm philosophically opposed to spending federal tax dollars on a local level. Those tax dollars came from somewhere. They didn't come out of thin air. They came from working people who are paying their tax bill. They came from social security taxes. They came to things that go into our federal budget. I find it unpleasant to think that this system, we're part of the system that's taking dollars from other places and injecting them here. I understand the philosophy. I understand the thinking, because if we don't get it, somebody else will. So, we need to get ours. But that just perpetuates an eighteen-trillion-dollar debt that our country's in. I'd rather see everyone, medium income, high income, low income, people working and being productive and generating the income they need to provide housing and food, shelter for their clothing, and clothing for their children, their families. But I realize that's difficult, because we impose on them a very high tax burden. And one of the highest burdens is the FICA rate, the social security tax. I understand we don't control that, and we're not going to vote on that here. But this is all part of that system, and I find that unpleasant to think about. I'd rather see us not be a part of that system.
Okay. Yes, Yolanda?
I just want to make one point clear. A lot of the folks that we work with, they do work. They do have jobs. They just don't make enough to take care of the needs that they have.
Okay. What are the final comments? Do we have the council on this, anything? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Latere?
No.
Okay. Number two. In order to waive the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approve a thirty-six-month contract with Webtech Wireless Incorporated for fleet management tracking services in the amount of fifty thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars plus applicable sales taxes and shipping costs. Kit?
Whereas the implementation of fleet management tracking services will allow the Transportation Division to increase productivity while meeting the needs of the city and the citizens more effectively and efficiently. And whereas, after staff contacted several tracking service providers, it was determined that Webtech Wireless Incorporated is the only company with the ability to provide certain features required to meet the city's needs, including real-time monitoring of vehicles. And therefore, be ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore weighs requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a thirty-six-month contract with Webtech Wireless Incorporated for software or service and maintenance in the amount of fifty thousand four hundred and forty dollars plus applicable sales taxes and shipping costs. A copy of the agreement is attached to this ordinance and made a part hereof.
Kit?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As Kit just read, that pretty much sums up the entire part of this. We looked at several systems. This was the only one. After working with purchasing, we could not find anybody else that could give us a bid that equaled this. And thus, it was their suggestion that we go for a bid waiver on that. We normally would bid it out. We feel like this will give us a lot of information as to where our vehicles are, especially in the wintertime when we're trying to respond to the police needs, to respond where the more difficult areas in town are to keep clear. It'll also allow us to track our sweepers. And at some point in the future, we'll be able to develop a, where we can tie it into an app where anyone on their smartphone can tell where we have treated streets. It will change the color of the map from, like, red is untreated to green is treated, so people will know when they leave their home, they can expect, say, Highway seventy-one or Highway sixty-two to be cleared on the way to Walmart or get to the grocery store. So, we feel like this will be a big advantage for us to, both improving the safety of our employees and be able to provide assistance in the quickest way possible. So, that's pretty much a summation of this.
Okay. What questions we have for Terry on this? Okay? Yes, John?
No questions or comment. I congratulate you. Thank you for bringing us to the twenty-first century.
Thank you.
Okay. What public comment do we have on this? So, now, I'll bring it back to the council.
If we suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Latere?
Yes.
In order to waive the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approve a thirty-six-month contract with Webtech Wireless Incorporated for fleet management tracking services in the amount of fifty thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars plus applicable sales taxes and shipping costs.
Go to the third and final reading?
Second.
A motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Latere?
Yes.
In order to waive the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approve a thirty-six-month contract with Webtech Wireless Incorporated for fleet management tracking services in the amount of fifty thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars plus applicable sales taxes and shipping costs.
Any final comments from the council? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Latere?
Yes.
Okay, number three. In order to rezone that property described in zoning petition RZN fifteen dash fifty-seven-five for approximately seventy point seven oh acres located at the northeast corner of Van Ash and Steel Boulevards from C-two Thoroughfare Commercial to C-three Central Commercial. Kit?
Be ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the city council for the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from C-two Thoroughfare Commercial to C-three Central Commercial as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made a part hereof. Section two, that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section One.
Okay. Andrew?
Yes, this property is at the northeast corner of Steel Boulevard in Van Ash. It's approximately eighteen acres. It has two parcels. I'll zoom over here and Google Earth so you can see this a little more clearly. Here's the yellow place marker here. It's undeveloped parcel. A large portion of it is in a floodplain from Mud Creek. It's currently zoned C-two Thoroughfare Commercial. The applicant proposes to rezone the property to C-three, which is Central Commercial. Their intent is to develop a multifamily development project here in this area. This was discussed at our Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission voted in favor of the request, and staff's recommending approval of it. There were a couple of Planning Commissioners that recommended that the zoning be a form-based zoning district instead of the C-three zoning that's proposed. And one of the reasons staff was in favor of this, we do feel like this is in line with our overall goals of City Plan twenty-thirty, where you have people that can live, work, and shop in the same areas. So, we are very excited to start seeing residential development in the Seaman Business Park area. And we feel like the proximity to the trail and the businesses in this area will really, really help start to create that community we're looking for. We probably would have, from just an urban design standpoint, preferred a form-based district. However, the council did recently approve a large expanse of zoning to C-three for the Uptown Project, which is just down the street here, which is a comparable acreage. They're also doing a multifamily project. And so, we felt like that policy direction from council also influenced our recommendation to you on this. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. What questions do we have for Andrew on this? Yes?
What was staff's recommendation on the Uptown Project?
We did recommend in favor of that one as well.
But you didn't have a council policy precedent for that one?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Andrew on this?
I'll zoom over here and Google Earth so you can, you can see this a little more clearly. Here's the yellow place marker here. It's undeveloped parcel. A large portion of it is in a floodplain from Mud Creek. It's currently zoned C2 Territorial Commercial. The applicant proposes to rezone the property to C3, which is Central Commercial. Their intent is to develop a multifamily development project here in this area. This was discussed at our planning commission meeting. The planning commission voted in favor of the request, and staff's recommending approval of it. There were a couple of planning commissioners that recommended that the zoning be a form-based zoning district instead of the C3 zoning that's proposed. And one of the reasons staff was in favor of this, we do feel like this is in line with our overall goals of City Plan 2030 where you have people that can live, work, and shop in the same areas. So we are very excited to start seeing residential development in the Seaman Business Park area, and we feel like the proximity to the trail and the businesses in this area will really, really help start to create that community we're looking for. We probably would have, from just an urban design standpoint, preferred a form-based district. However, the council did recently approve a large expanse of zoning to C3 for the Uptown Project, which is just down the street here, which is a comparable acreage. They're also doing a multifamily project, and so we felt like that policy direction from council also influenced our recommendation to you on this. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, what questions do we have for Andrew on this? Yes?
What was staff's recommendation on the Uptown Project?
We did recommend in favor of that one as well.
But you didn't have a council policy precedent for that one?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Andrew on this? Okay, is the applicant here? Yes.
Yes, Mayor, I'm Tom Henley with Crafton Tool, representing Thompson Thrift Development out of Indianapolis. They wanted to be here tonight, but with the weather, they were unable to get here. They, they do intend on, as Andrew said, I think Andrew's seen some of the conceptual plats that we'll be bringing through. It's, I don't guess a true form-based development, but there is enough variety in it that I believe it'll, you know, be looked upon with favor by the, by the planning commission. They, the applicant did, or our client did also ask that, that if council saw fit to vote in favor of the rezoning, due to the time-sensitive nature of the real estate contract that they're in, they did request that you also consider suspending the rules and doing all three readings for the rezoning tonight.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? Okay, bring it back to the council. What's the wishes of the council?
If we go to the second reading?
A motion as second to go to the second reading.
Wait, Mayor, I think?
Yes?
Well, I, actually, I wanted Andrew to talk a little bit about what is the most comparable form-based zone to what they're asking for and kind of what the differences are between the C3 and that form-based zone.
Yeah, so probably the most comparable form-based zoning would be CS, Community Services, and that also allows for a mix of uses, would allow multifamily, similar to what they're proposing. The main difference is, under the Community Services zoning, buildings have to be placed up at the street, trying to create an urban street edge. Under the C3 zoning, buildings can be placed as far back from the street as they want in a typical garden-style apartment form.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, was there something else? I thought so, somebody's... John?
I would urge the city council to let's give the applicant what they're asking for, C3. Give them the latitude. They know what's best for their customers, for the people who will be buying these homes. If they build homes and nobody buys them, we won't get what we're trying to achieve: work, live, play, entertain, shop in the same area of town. So leave the applicant, the landowner, the person with the most risk in this deal, the freedom to choose what's best for the market. And I think C3 does that.
Okay.
There is a motion to suspend the rules and a second on the floor.
You're absolutely right. I just wanted to be, just a little note to myself. Anything else? All right, we have a motion as second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hetty?
No.
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5075 for approximately 17.7 acres located at the northeast corner of Van Ash and Steel Boulevards from C2 Territorial Commercial to C3 Central Commercial.
Okay, any final comments?
I have a final comment.
Okay.
I would prefer to see a form-based code, but in this situation, I think that we can move forward with this development. I'm feeling comfortable about it because of the compatibility with the zoning that we previously did down the street. I'm not saying that I'm in love with this and that I embrace it fully, but at this time, I think it is compatible, and I would feel confident in moving forward to support this.
Okay, any other? Yes?
I'm not comfortable with the, with it not being a form-based zone. I, I like the general idea of what they're proposing, and I would gladly support a form-based rezoning, but I can't support the, the C3.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Matthew?
I just have to agree. I think we made a mistake with the rezoning decision before, and I think we lucked out in the fact that the developer chose to exercise the option to do a urban form in their development.
Okay. Anybody? Yes, John?
Let me remind us all, who has the most risk? The developer, the owner, signs the note, our investors' owner, her own money into this project, they pay the tax, they pay the insurance, they maintain the property, they take the business risk when they develop it. We have very little at stake here. We should defer to their judgment and not try to prejudge what they will do or won't do. They will do, I believe, what the market demands and what people want in that location. If they do something other than that, they'll fall flat on their faces. They have to do what the market wants, and that's the best we can do for the people of Fayetteville.
Okay.
Of course, we're not going to change any votes here, but the idea that the city has nothing to lose with development decisions is farcical. Every decision we make, every development that fails is a problem we have to clean up, whether it fails in 10 years after it's built or 50 years after it's built. The reason we have zoning, even going back to the 50s, is to protect the city from failed developments.
Anything else, Mayor?
No. Sounds like it's short.
Very good. No, I'm right.
May I respond, Mayor?
No, let's not get into that, John. I think, I think we've done enough of this. All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hetty?
No.
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Okay. Number four. An ordinance to approve vacation 15-5089 submitted by USI Engineers for property located at 3215 North Hills Boulevard to vacate a portion of an existing utility easement. Kit?
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 1454-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the utility easement is not required for corporate purposes, now therefore be ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandon the following utility easements described in exhibit B attached here to and made a part hereof. Section Two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk along with a map attached and labeled exhibit A shall be filed in the office of recorded county and recorded in deed records of the county. And Section Three, that this vacation approval is subject to the following condition of approval: one, any damage or relocation of existing facilities and associated new easement dedication shall be at the owner, developer's expense.
Okeydoke. Andrew?
Sir, this property is in the southwest portion of the Washington Regional Medical Center campus. They are in the process of getting construction and building permits to do a, a large expansion for the women's clinic and a parking garage. During their construction review process, they discovered that there's a small sliver of utility easement underneath an edge of where they want to build their building, so they're requesting to vacate that easement, and all of the appropriate utility companies have agreed to vacate the easement. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What questions do we have for Andrew on this? Okay, any public comment on this? Okay, going to bring it back to the council. What's the wishes of the council?
We've got the proposal here. I don't know if he wants to say anything.
Oh, yes. Okay.
He's happy to sit.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second?
We have a motion as second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hetty?
Yes.
Tannett?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
An ordinance to approve VAC 15-5089 submitted by USI Engineers for property located at 3215 North Hills Boulevard to vacate a portion of an existing utility easement.
I move, go to the third and final reading. Second?
We have a motion as second to go to the third and final reading. No discussion? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?